If you would, please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge, allegiance to the United States of America and to the freedom of speech, tolerance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our treasure hunter pledge?
As an adult and a treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talents, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions.
And important capital projects continue to get funded. We can ensure that we are able to support the increasing demand for a workforce that is not only ready, but fully able and capable to work as development and expansion projects are completed. Therefore, without hesitation, your EDC, your partner, supports this renewal and continuation of the one-half cent sales surtax to support our St. Lucie Public Schools. A diverse and thriving economy such as ours in St. Lucie County is critically reliant upon our school district's continued pursuit and achievement of excellence in all aspects of education. So with that said, and in the interest of promoting sustained economic growth and prosperity, we will help encourage all to vote in this year's general election in favor of this continuation of the half-cent sales surtax. So, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, as Lena laid out the case for this very important endeavor, and let me tell you why, from a business and economic perspective, why this is a critical and imperative proposition for St. Lucie County. You know, there's a couple of things that keep me up at night, and one of them is the tremendous amount of business and jobs that have been created in our community because of the partnership. And I think that the renewal here is really important, both from a construction and technology perspective, for us to keep competitive. So, let me state some of the things that, these are very, very positive things that have this really phenomenal economic growth. Just a year or two ago, a economic research firm by the name of Economic Strategy Center out of Atlanta, we commissioned an economic impact analysis of business growth and job creation in St. Lucie County. And since 2017, we've had 77 projects, and projects either expanding businesses here in St. Lucie County, or relocations of ones that have come into the community. And one just has to drive down I-95 and see the new businesses that have come here and the industrial development monuments that have been constructed. So, out of those 77 businesses, 44 are existing and the others are new, and they're in manufacturing, distribution, marine aviation, as well as biotechnology. This is very, very exciting. So, those projects have created, or will create, 5,500 direct jobs. Indirect, it's 10,000 over the next five years. Of that, there's been several hundreds of millions of dollars of capital investment, either by developers building these structures or new businesses coming in. With that, that has created $1 billion with a B of economic output. So, capital investment, the jobs created and the payroll, the business-to-business transactions, the sale of products and services. One thing that you may have noticed that St. Lucie County is a thriving hotbed for new small businesses. So, many small businesses that provide products and services to these companies. And then the last is, we're starting to finally see increases in our average earnings per worker. And this is the reason why the EDC exists, is that we need to create sustainable jobs for our residents. We need to make sure that we expand the tax base, which we have done, and now we're providing for the economic quality of life. I don't know about you, but it starts with St. Lucie Public Schools and the supply line of talented, ready-to-go individuals that are ready to work. To me, it's exciting that somebody 18 to 19 years old could work for one of these businesses now and make about $50,000 a year. You gotta work hard, but that's a start, and we didn't have that before. 10 years ago, we didn't have that. Now, we have it. So, I think we're laying out the case that for continued economic growth, St. Lucie Public Schools leads the way in terms of academic achievement, graduation rates, and also career and technical education. You know, when you see the quality of the instructors and the curriculum and what's coming out of our school system, you know, our employers have a lot to be thankful for. So, as Lena mentioned, the EDC Executive Committee voted to support this. We're our partners. We want to do everything we can to help St. Lucie Public Schools. Most importantly, our cherished resource, our young children and our students that are going to go into the workplace. So, thank you for connecting the world of the classroom to world of work and making this a great place to live. Thank you.
Pete, if it's okay, I'm going to ask the board, we're going to finish our program down there, and I'd like to get a picture with Pete, as Lena and Sharita, the treasure. First of all, I just wanted to say, Pete, thank you for the partnership. You know, industry, you have to have quality schools to attract quality industry, because the first thing that people ask is, when they're moving a business, is where are my kids going to go to school? Where are my employees' children going to go to school? Especially if they're relocating. And we're, you know, I always say this, we're a destination district. We continue to attract the best teachers, the best administrators, the best principals. We have the best of everything. I have the best board, I think, in TC Palm. I think it's the best article they've ever written when they said that the school board got an A because they focus on kids and not culture wars. And that's a tribute to the professionalism of our board and also the port that they provide to our principals, and many of our principals are here tonight along with their teams. So, with that being said, I'd ask the board to step down, maybe, take a picture, and then we're going to have Mr. Ocampo's presentation on our graduation rate, because we're graduating the future workers in St. Lucie County. Thank you for your support with EDC. Thank you, Pete.
Thank you, Dr. Prince.
Once again, I want to thank the EDC. At this time, I'm going to bring up our Executive Director of Assessment and Accountability, Ms. Dr. Adrienne Ocampo, to have a brief presentation on our success in graduation. Graduation rates just came out, and also, we have many of our high school principals here along with their teams. Dr. Ocampo?
All right, good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Superintendent Prince. So, we have some good news to share and a great story to tell. One of the many stories is that St. Lucie Public Schools is ranked 12th in the state for graduation in 2023, as Dr. Prince mentioned in his remarks. So, I'm going to go back several years and find out and share with you how far we have come as a district. So, in this slide, we see the graduation rate from 2013 all the way through 2023, and we can see that this year, we have a 92% graduation rate. Even more exciting is that we see that the graduation rate has been at or above 90% for seven consecutive years. We are now one of three districts left in this elite group. So, we join Nassau and St. John's. Unfortunately, Sonny had six consecutive years, but was unable to meet the 90% mark with an 89.5, so we're up to three schools, three districts in this elite group. So, this line graph is the graduation rates. As we go to the next slide, we show our graduation rankings over the same time period from 2013 to 2023. We see that we are ranked 12th out of 67 districts in Florida. That yearly rank mirrors the trends of our graduation rates seen on the previous slide. The bottom line is, all of this is good news. So, I mentioned that we are one of three districts that have a 90% or higher graduation rate for seven consecutive years. However, St. Lucie Public Schools has some challenges that the other members of this elite group does not have. As you can see from this graphic, St. Lucie had over 2,000 students in the graduation cohort that qualifies for free or reduced lunch. The last column indicates the percentage of the graduation cohort that receives free or reduced lunch. However, as a district, and we've heard this many times from Dr. Prince, that we make no excuses, and our success is a testament to the relentless approach of our teachers and our administrators to ensure that our students graduate. So, this is our district rate for our high schools and our district. It shows four high schools above 97%. Treasure Coast High School, Centennial, Lincoln Park, and Mosaic. Again, overall, St. Lucie Public Schools has an unrounded graduation rate of 91.5. So, we improved despite the graduation bar being raised as the state requires higher scores. In addition, this was the last group of graduates challenged by COVID during their high school years. So, we're going to look at the comparisons between the last two years. We can see that three schools, Port St. Lucie, Centennial, and Treasure Coast, have all increased from the previous year. Overall, St. Lucie Public Schools increased by .7, and it's important to note that we support all of our non-graduates relentlessly. So, even after graduation, our alternative ed department works with our students with the, most of the remaining students graduating within two years. So, let's take a deeper dive into this graduation story. We see that when comparing the 22 to 23 graduation percentage by race, our Hispanic students showed a 2% increase. Our Black students maintained their graduation rate of 91.1, and our white students showed an increase of 1.1%. As the Equity Officer for the district, I'm thrilled that these percentages are so close as we continue to strive for 100% for all of our students. So, these are the percentages. Let's talk about ranks. So, when we analyze our graduation ranking by race, we see out of the 67 districts in the state, Florida, that our rankings for Black students increased by one position to seventh. They were previously ranked eighth. We increased our ranking for Hispanic students by nine positions to ninth, and increased our rankings for white students by two positions to 22nd. Now, let's look at other categories and our graduation percentage from 22 to 23. When we look at our percentage of economically disadvantaged, which is our students that receive free or reduced lunch, we see that they increased by .6%. Our students with disabilities, ESE students, increased by 3.8%. And lastly, our English language learners increased by 3.2%, our ELL students. So, let's look at rankings for those categories as well. So, when we analyze our graduation rankings by the same categories, we see that students with disabilities increased by six positions to sixth. They were previously ranked 12th. We increased our rankings for economically disadvantaged students by three positions to eighth, and increased our rankings for ELL students by four positions to 12th. Again, this is due to the hard work of our teachers and administrators and our belief that all students can learn, no exceptions. So, finally, when we compare ourselves to our neighboring counties, we see that we are one of two counties that have improved, and our graduation rate is 1.2% higher than our neighbor to the south. That one's for you, Mr. Kelly. And once again, we increased .7% last year to a 91.5. So, to wrap all of this up, Dr. Prince has said the graduation rate shows the health of our district. I know that our principals at all levels hold the students' hands in kindergarten when they get off the bus on the first day of school. They walk their middle school students to class, so they make it there on time, and in high school, they shake the students' hands as they walk across the stage. And all of our principals and staff celebrate these wins together, knowing that each one of them has played a part in this important process. But at this time, we're going to invite our high school principals and their team to come up for a picture. So, we are going to start. Okay. So, we are going to start with all of our principals coming up, and I invite our board members to join them in the front with the banner for Port St. Lucie Public Schools up in the front for a picture. That's all principals and/or board members joining Dr. Prince. Okay, thank you. At this time, we invite, we invite Port St. Lucie's staff to stay in the front with Nicole for their picture. Assistant principals with Port St. Lucie and graduation coach. We invite Mr. Alfonso. Thank you, Port St. Lucie. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Layman, Mr. Layman and the assistant principals from Treasure Coast High School. Thank you, Treasure Coast High School. At this time, we invite Mr. Alfonso and the team from Westwood Academy. Thank you, Westwood Academy. This time, we invite Mr. Gardner and his team from Fort Pierce Central for their picture. Thank you, Fort Pierce Central High School. At this time, we invite Mrs. Harrington and the Lincoln Park Academy team to the front. Thank you, Lincoln Park Academy. At this time, we invite Ms. Zimba and her team from Mosaic Digital Academy to the front. Thank you. And last but not least, we invite Centennial High School, Mrs. Popwell, and the team to the front for their picture.
All right, Madam Chair, School Board members, Superintendent, Dr. Prince. At this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Kevin G. Perry, Assistant to the Superintendent, to the podium, who will introduce our next speaker.
Madam Chair, School Board members, Superintendent Prince. African American History Month is the brainchild of Dr. Carter G. Woodson, a noted scholar and academician with an earned PhD in history from Harvard University. It originally started as Negro History Week in 1926. Woodson believed, if a race has no history, if it has no worthwhile tradition, it becomes a negligible factor in the thought of the world, and it stands in danger of being exterminated. Negro History Week was expanded to become Black History Month in 1976, when United States President Gerald Ford issued the first Black History Month commemoration, urging Americans to participate in its observance and saying with the celebration, "We can seize the opportunity to honor the two often neglected accomplishments of Black Americans in every area of endeavor throughout our history." President Carter added in 1978 that, "With the celebration provides for all Americans a chance to rejoice and express pride in a heritage that adds so much to our way of life." President Reagan went on to say in 1981 that, "Understanding the history of Black Americans is key to understanding the strength of our nation." Since 1976, every president from Gerald Ford through Joe Biden has issued a statement honoring the spirit of Black History Month and endorsed a specific theme. Here to present the African American History Month proclamation is our very own Principal of the Year, Keith Davis.
School Board St. Lucie County Proclamation for National African American History Month, February 2024. Whereas, the School Board of St. Lucie County takes pride in joining Americans throughout the country and various parts of the world in recognizing February 2024 as National African American History Month. And whereas, African American History Month celebrates the contributions that African Americans have made to African American history. And whereas, National African American History Month had its origin in 1915 and was initiated in 1926 by Dr. Carter G. Woodson in Black History Week. And in 1976, the commemoration of Black history in the United States was expanded to Black History Month. And in doing so, he stated, "Those who have no record of what their forebears have accomplished, the inspiration which comes from the teaching of biography and history is lost." Whereas, in 1994 and 2002, the Florida legislation passed legislation to ensure that African and African American history continues, content is taught in schools. And whereas, this year's theme, African Americans and the Arts, explores how African Americans continue to mobilize resources and shape social movements to create space for African Americans to thrive, celebrate, and this impact Black Americans have had on visual arts, music, and cultural movements. And whereas, Black artists continue to fuse the rhythmic cadence of creative expressions with the pulsating beats of progress. And whereas, it is appropriate to call upon schools and the community to observe the month of February with relevant programs, activities, and ceremonies to celebrate as many accomplishments of Black Americans. And for the School Board of St. Lucie County to recognize and promote these observances district-wide. Now therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of St. Lucie County does hereby proclaim February 2024 as African American History Month, adopted this 13th day of February 2024.
Superintendent Prince, we respectfully request that you recommend to the board adoption. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Michelle Harrington, Principal, Lincoln Park Academy, who will provide our next recognition.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Member Superintendent Dr. Prince. It is most fitting, following the proclamation for African American History Month, to introduce our next honor this evening, and that is Coach Windell Adams. Tonight, I would like to honor Coach Windell Adams for two special recognitions. The first is to recognize him as the winningest coach on the Treasure Coast, having earned an historic 500 career wins on January 12th. And that record tonight now stands at 510 career wins. In 2000, he was named as the head girls' basketball coach at Lincoln Park Academy, and for the last 24 years in that position, he has demonstrated the rewards which come with commitment, dedication, and grit. He has guided the LPA Girls' Basketball Team to 17 district championship titles, six regional finals, one regional championship title, and one Final Four appearance. LPA clinched its most recent district title last Friday night in a 34-70 victory over O'Gally. The second special recognition is to formally present to the board that the Lincoln Park Academy Gymnasium was formally named the Windell Adams Court on Friday, March 2nd. Thank you to the board superintendent, Friday, February 2nd. Thank you to the board superintendent and other members of cabinet who attended the ceremony. We, I would like to recognize Coach Adams, if you would come on up. And if you know Coach Adams, you know that he walks with humility every second of the day, and so this type of an honor makes him incredibly nervous. So congratulations, Coach. And yes, congratulations. And I know he's joined tonight by the Lady Greyhounds, Coach Adams. And the Lady Greyhounds, come on up and join Coach and bring that banner with you.
Okay, and next, I'd like to ask Mr. Eric Hennig, our Custodial Services Area Manager, to the podium, who will recognize our next group.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Superintendent Dr. Prince. Tonight, we recognize a group of individuals from both the custodial and, I'm sorry, the Custodial Services Department and the Facility Department, who have earned the Certified Custodian and Master Custodian Certification through the Florida Schools Plant Manager Association Custodial Training Program. Since 1994, the Florida Department of Education has asked the Florida School Plant Manager Association to take responsibility to upgrade and update their custodial training program. There are five courses totaling 64 hours to achieve the Certified Custodian Certification. There are three courses totaling 40 hours to achieve the Master Custodian Certification. Courses include the Professional Custodian, Safety, Sanitation and Housekeeping, Floor and Carpet Care, Certified Custodian Certification, Martin Maintenance and Climate Control, Grounds Care, and Master Custodian Certification. These courses have been held weekly in four-hour increments over the past year, and I thank all the administrators for being flexible to allow these plant managers to attend and to partake in tonight's ceremony. The recipients are, and you may come up, please. Ibianna Abamo? Okay. Ibianna Abamo? Please, please come when your name is called. David Alfonso. Renika Buford. Jose Banila. Lilia Cato. Matthew Glover. Tommy Johnson. Lorna Lewis Allen. And we'll do the other half shortly. The next one. Our remaining recipients are Mario Marin Ramos. Paul Miller. Norma Ocundo. Jose Ruiz. Hector Velava. Gail Wiley. And Terrence Williams. Congratulations to our new state certified master custodians. Good job, guys. Thank you. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to invite Esther Rivera, Director of Student Services, who will recognize our January Aim for 100 attendance schools.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Holly, Board Members, and Superintendent Dr. Prince. Our mission in St. Lucie Public Schools is to ensure that all students graduate from safe and caring schools, equipped with the knowledge, skills, and desire to succeed. In order to succeed, we need to ensure that all students and educators are in attendance to provide and receive that quality education. Our aim in the attendance initiative is to recognize the efforts of schools where attendance is a top priority. In our last board meeting, five schools were recognized for having achieved the highest percentage of students in attendance in school. We applaud those efforts, and the celebrations continue. Tonight, we are excited to announce schools that have made significant improvement efforts in attendance on early dismissal days. Five schools have doubled their efforts to have students remain in school every day of the school calendar. Each of these schools has gone up over 20 percentage points in attendance. Dan McCarty Middle School with 49.60% increase. And principals, if you could please come up with your banners and your certificate. Also Parkway Elementary School, 40.87% increase. White City Elementary School with a 32.21% increase. Forest Grove Middle School with a 31.77% increase. And St. Lucie West K-8 with a 24.76% increase.
And that concludes our special recognitions for this evening.
We'll resume the business portion of our meeting and move to our ESOL report, and I don't believe anyone's here this evening. I did have the opportunity to talk to Mr. Freeland today through a Zoom call. He sends his wishes that he's ready to be back with us and delivering his report, but he's doing well health-wise and appreciates all the comfort and attention that has been sent to him during his health trials. Okay, CDWA, I saw Ms. Martha. No report. We're glad you're here with us tonight. And our Youth Advisory Council. Mr. Chair, if you would come forward. Welcome to the podium.
Thank you, Chairwoman Holly. Good evening, Chairwoman Holly, School Board Members, and Superintendent Dr. Prince. I hope you all have had a wonderful month so far. I am pleased to be joined by our Council Secretary, Noah Fox Goodman, and our LPA Administration Team today. Our Youth Advisory Council meeting for the month of February was held on Monday, February 5th, at Fort Pierce Westwood Academy. The council was thrilled to have guest speaker and St. Lucie Public Schools Director of Financial Operations, Mrs. Albertin, provide valuable insights on district finance options and answer council members' questions. Council members voiced concerns about school events, particularly regarding students who are only able to pay with cash and may not be able to attend these events that hold other forms of payment. Mrs. Albertin offered to invest Mrs. Albertin offered to investigate the use of IDs and transaction services through Skyward as a solution. Council members also engaged in discussion on accessing security footage in student parking lots where vehicles can cause damages and students can escape accountability. Members also discussed effective methods to log student volunteer hours pointing to Skyward as a possible solution. Concerns regarding students not standing during the pledge were also brought up, and Council Member Lee agreed to provide a presentation during the March meeting. The Communication Outreach Committee also held its first inaugural meeting on February 1st, presided by its chairperson, Sarah Neffsy, and is working diligently to continue establishing the Youth Advisory Council's social media presence and community engagement. The council looks forward to meeting on Monday, March 4th at Fort Pierce Central High School at 3:30 PM. Thank you all for your time and continued support.
Thank you, Ashir and Noah, for being here tonight. Board members, we will move on to the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we have the consent agenda adopted. Mr. Superintendent, we have your recommendation, please.
I recommend the board approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Okay. Before we act on that recommendation, are there any items that board members wish to pull or remove for separate discussion or vote? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to...
So moved.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, and thank you, Dr. Mills. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. We'll move along then. A reminder of our informational reports regarding the charter schools. I hope you all have time to look those over and stay abreast of those situations. Mr. Superintendent, we'll move to your report.
First of all, I want to thank Keith Davis for a great job with the proclamation on Black History Month. I always like to say, in St. Lucy County, opportunity is colorblind, and every child has an opportunity to succeed in our district regardless of where they come from, what color they are, because it truly is colorblind. And that's a tribute to the professionals that we have in our classrooms supporting our kids, the outstanding administrators that we have, and also the leadership team that I have as part of my team to support our students. Because all children are capable of success, no exceptions. Also wanted to say, had a great event, the Night of the Stars event on February 3rd. Our Teacher of the Year, Lindsay Loreno from St. Lucy West K-8. Once again, congratulations, a science teacher. We had our school-related Employee of the Year, Amelia Scott, a behavior interventionist from Lakewood Park. Our outstanding first-year teacher was Caitlin McHugh, third-grade teacher at Palm Point. Also, she was a promise is a promise, which we make a promise to students, that if they come back, we guarantee them a job. And she took us up on that promise, and I want to congratulate her. Our distinguished minority educator was Cliff Robinson, and Conduct Counselor at Sam Gaines. And I also wanted to thank the board members that were in attendance. Speaking of our board members, I did send to the board a TC Palm article where they basically gave a grade to municipal governments. And our school district, our board, that you see before you on the dais, was rated an A. And I just wanted to read the first sentence from the article. "While other school districts around the state have spent countless hours on culture war debates, the St. Lucy County School Board has rightly kept its focus on student achievement." Nothing could be further from the truth. I am so grateful and fortunate to work with, as a team, a fantastic board that is committed to students. Not every superintendent can say that. And I can't say enough how much I appreciate the board members on the dais for allowing us, our professional educators, and many of them are here tonight, to do the work that they do to support the kids in our school. As seen in evidence by Dr. Ocampo's graduation rate presentation, we're in the top in the state for many of our most fragile students, our special education students, our English is a second language learner, kids that have to take a reading test in English and still are passing at an astronomical rate. And, you know, in the top in the state, in the top 10 for our Black and Hispanic students as well. And we have no gap at all between our Black, White, and Hispanic students and our graduation rate. And I can't say enough that graduating in the state of Florida is hard. You have to pass a reading test, you have to pass an algebra test, you have to have a 2.0 GPA, and you have to have 24 credits. And I challenge many of the adults watching tonight or out in the audience to pass that algebra exam, because it is extremely, extremely difficult. I wanted to also recognize, I say all the time, we're a destination district and on our personnel agenda. One of the things that I'd like to say to the board is we've been able to capture a lot of folks that lived in St. Lucy County but were driving to Palm Beach County and Martin County to work in their schools. And we've not only been able to capture many teachers to work here locally, but we've been able to attract quality administrators as well. We have a new administrator to introduce tonight, coming to us from Palm Beach County. He's going to be the new AP at Port St. Lucy High School. I'd ask Vince Lalonde, please stand up. I will tell the board that Vince was personnel at a school I was a former principal of at Palm Beach Gardens High School in Palm Beach County. I've never had so many people call me on one person to recommend to come up here. And Vince lives in our community. And also, his wife, Monique, is a firefighter. Monique, please stand with Leila. Come on, Monique. Because we adopt the family, Monique. It's not just Vince. And I'm expecting Leila to enroll in our public schools as well, Vince. So I'm looking forward to that. Want to congratulate Fort Pierce Central High's, the first district boys' basketball title since 2011. Congrats to the Cobras. And we saw Coach Adams, they won their 17th district title in their history last Friday. So congratulations, Coach Adams, for another district title, because they surely deserve it. And lastly, as I conclude my remarks, is our upcoming events. We have the Science Fair Friday, February 16th, from 9 to 11 at the Kite Center, IRSC. And lastly, I just wanted to thank our principals once again for the outstanding work that they do with our students. And it's not just the principals, but it's the APs, it's the teachers, it's the bus drivers, it's the food service folks, it's the clerks. Because every adult our kids come into contact are caring adults, and they care about our kids. And lastly, this is the most important thing I'm going to say tonight. Mr. Ingersoll, tomorrow is Valentine's Day. Don't forget. That concludes my remarks. Thank you.
You set my wife out of town.
Oh, my. Okay. Mr. Attorney, do you have a report to follow that?
No, my only report is to wish all of you a happy Valentine's Day. Everybody.
Thank you. Board members, we'll move on to our reports and action items. We have a couple of action items to address first. The first being 20.1, the proposed adoption of resolution for referendum election to continue levy of 1/2 cent school capital outlay sales surtax. Mr. Superintendent, we'll receive your recommendation.
I recommend the board adopt the resolution with such revisions as the board determines appropriate for a referendum election to determine if electors approve the continuation of levying 1/2 cent school capital outlay sales surtax as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Any conversation? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. And again, we want to thank the EDC for being here tonight and in support of this, and look forward to working with them as we go forward. Board members, 20.2, the school board attorney selection process. You'll recall that at our workshop three weeks ago, I gave each of you a packet with all of the applications that we had received, and I hope you all had time to look them over. Tonight, what I would like to do is reach a consensus on those that we would like to invite in for a formal interview with us. So anyone that would like to open that discussion, I am certainly ready to hear.
I believe, Madam Chair, we had five? Five applications, and after viewing all applications, I feel that it would only be fair to give them all a chance to come and be interviewed by us.
Any other comments or discussion?
I agree with Dr. Mills.
Okay. Ms. Richardson? Ms. Ingersoll? Okay, that was quite easy. We will, I will issue invitations to each of the five that submitted to us. Now, the next one probably won't be that easy, but we need to decide on a date for those interviews to take place. With five of them, it's a good half-day, a little bit more perhaps. I'm just going to throw out there on the table that perhaps at our February 27th workshop meeting, we just stay and make it a full day. We'll have the workshop in the morning when it concludes, and we'll begin our interviews with the various ones.
I agree.
Any other thoughts?
Excellent idea.
As long as the principals don't have to stay.
No, we would not be doing the interviews. Wouldn't subject you all to that. No, we'll be in a different room. We'll leave the boardroom for them for their trainings and such, so... Is that date agreeable then? Because I would like to send off to all of the applicants and get the schedule set. Okay. Well, that was easy then. Thank you so much.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. That was on the 27th?
27th, yes.
I have a conflict with that, because you're saying this would be after...
After the workshop.
I have a conflict here with that. Otherwise, I would have said it would have been great.
He's just wanting to complicate it, huh? No, I'm sorry. Okay. Other thoughts?
28th.
I will be out of town from the 27th to the 29th. I'm back on March 1st.
That's a Friday, that's a tough... Oh, it's also Young Floridian. Judging that Friday. Okay. Let's go into March a little further then, perhaps that first Tuesday, the 5th of March.
Madam Chair, I will not be available that whole week as I've...
Okay.
Madam Chair, why don't we just do it the second Tuesday before our board meeting? Just start at 11:00?
Any objections or any conflicts with that?
No.
Well, it's the date. I'm not even sure of the date. I might not even be there.
March 12th. March 12th.
When's spring break?
The next, the week after that.
I'm good.
You're in May, huh?
Okay.
I'm not in May.
March 12th, it's our next regularly scheduled evening board meeting. So we will come in, it's, we're going to have to come in late morning, because to do 5, it'll take, probably come in around 10:30 or so, and... Okay. All right, we will book the room for that, March the 12th, 10:30, and we will go through until the board meeting begins at 5, or until we finish our business before that. Okay, is that good with everybody? All right, thank you. We'll then move to our board member reports, and Mr. Ingersoll, we'll begin with you tonight.
No report.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll. Dr. Mills?
I just want to say thank you to our Wendell Point Elementary students. Did a wonderful performance. I truly believe that if we truly care for one another, the more we care for one another, the more work, successful work, we can do. And so that song was just excellent that they sung. Thank you, Wendell Point, for coming out and performing for us this evening. Also, I had the opportunity to go to our Magnet School of the Arts and see the performance that the children did, The Lion King. And this is, what, up to eighth grade? Professional. Wonderful. Your director of music and of performance did an excellent job, as well as your staff there. And so it was a joy to be able to witness such talent. And as it was said earlier, that is why we support the arts here, and how important the arts are. Those children did a fantastic job. Our graduation rate, thank you so much for that presentation. It's important that our community understands and knows what we know what we are doing here in St. Lucy County Public Schools. We should be rated that A, Dr. Prince, that you mentioned at the TC Palm, well, because we have, the proof is in the pudding. And our administration, all the way across the board, our teachers, we celebrated our maintenance staff this evening. Everyone, the cafeteria, everyone plays a part, the bus drivers. We all play a part in our children's education, and from the moment that they enter those buses until the time that they go home in the evening. And they could not graduate without passing extremely hard tests from the state. And so this is not a give-type thing. They have to earn it. And everyone is doing a fantastic job with our graduation rate. We should celebrate that every day. Coach Wendell Adams, congratulations again on your recognition and your naming the court there at LPA after your name, you definitely earned that as well after all these years of being so successful in St. Lucy County Public Schools. In fact, he was one of my children's coaches, and he reminded me of that when he came up, you know? So he coached the boys' basketball team as well, and so it's just an honor. It's called our history. Our history, and then congratulations again, Coach Adams. The Aim for 100 Attendance Award, those five top schools, I am so proud of your hard work and making that happen to help get our children back into school like they should be. One, I believe it was Dan McCarty, led with 49% increase in attendance? That is incredible, boy. We're really, we're really doing it up here in our district in that area as well. And plant manager certification, I think we might have a few of them still here. Congratulations on your certifications. We know that took hard work as well.
Thank you, Dr. Mills. Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, I also want to congratulate Coach Wendell Adams also. It's quite an accomplishment, a record like that. He deserves, he deserves it well. Also, I missed the Night of the Stars, John. I heard it was fabulous. That's one thing I really don't want to miss, is that evening. I heard they did a wonderful, I won't mention any names because there's so many people that contribute to it, but I heard it was just as good or better than all of the year's good, but sorry I missed that. And lastly, I want to, it's important that the EDC that showed up here tonight to have our back like that. The Economic Development Council of St. Lucy County, not only is it a huge cheerleader, cheerleaders for the school district, but there, people don't realize how important they are to the entire county. They're cheerleaders for the counties, for the two cities. I mean, there's nothing that they don't do behind the businesses don't do that helps support our county and our district, so I just want to give them some praise. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Mrs. Richardson?
No report tonight.
Before I close out our regular meeting then, I just want to share an observation that I had with you all tonight. We spent well over an hour tonight recognizing the good things that are going on in this district. People were smiling. That was such a fantastic sight to see, because the awards that were given out tonight and won and celebrated, that's because of everybody sitting in this room and a lot of people watching on the air. What you do every day is noticed. air. What you do every day is noticed, but, Lord, we have no idea the shoes you walk in every day. So we just want to thank you for doing that, for being there for our students, for making us have an hour to celebrate all the good things that are going on in our schools, people-wise, school-wise, student-wise. That concludes our meeting for the evening. We are adjourned.